Good evening and welcome to the May meeting of the Idaho State School's Board of Education. We've just discovered that it's quite a bit hotter up here than usual tonight, not sure quite why, but these lights seem to be brighter and warmer than ever, so some of us are foregoing our formality tonight and not wearing our coats, so I hope you'll excuse us for that. We typically begin our meeting with a moment of silence, asking everyone to bow for a moment of silent meditation and thinking in your own way about the business that we have before us and keeping in mind that we keep the guidance of our students in top priority. So if you will, I'll ask that you bow with me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Let's stand as we introduce our color guard from Statesville High School as they present the colors and we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Colors, hold. Order, arms. Left, face. Here, coats. Present, coats. Please draw me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, coats. Order, coats. Right, face. Port, arms. For, march.
Thank you, this is. Before we begin our agenda tonight, I'll mention that we have Lisa Valdez. Here's our attorney filling in for Matt Pence, who's on vacation this week. They work with the same team and she's been here before, but for those who haven't met her, Lisa Valdez, she'll be making sure we stay in order tonight. I'll ask at this point, Mr. Johnson, if we have any adjustments to our agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Yes, sir. We're sending by an agenda, just want to double check and make sure that we got the right one in your board packet last week, but we do have these adjustments to the agenda tonight. First of all, Roman numeral four, letter F, our coach of the year could not be with us tonight, so we're going to move that to June if it's okay with the board. Under Roman numeral five, letter B, Friday, we gave you some copies of contracts for our administrative team at central office, principals, and what's coming by to you now is assistant principals. And when we get to that item on the agenda, we'll be referring to that. And if you have specific questions about any person on the report, we'll be glad to discuss those in closed session with you, or if you want to table this to another month, we'll be glad to do that, too. The last one did make it on your agenda, but I just wanted to make sure that Mitchell Community College, we will be voting on that trustee appointment this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll move on then with the consent agenda. Have item A under administration is that we have no business tonight there, so we'll move on to the personnel portion. Items B, C, D, E, and F, the acceptance of resignations, retirements, rehires, terminations, and leaves of absence. Item C, the acceptance of classified personnel. Item D, the approval of licensed personnel. Item E, the approval of administrative appointments. And item F, the approval of reinstated personnel. Dr. LaSane.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, you have had the opportunity to review the May personnel report. Please keep in mind that the other items on the agenda regarding approval of contracts are a separate item. Are there any questions regarding the standard monthly personnel report?
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our minutes from April 1st, the committee of the whole, and April 13th, Board of Education meeting minutes. If there are no additions or corrections to those minutes, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda items and the minutes from April 1st and 13th.
Mr. Chairman, two items on the minutes from the committee of the whole on page three, the second dot, the statement here says that I felt administrators should get the exact same supplements teachers, and I spoke with several of the board members, I don't believe that was what was said. I believe it was said that they should have a, there should be a matrix set up. I may have referred to as the teachers, but that is, it was not that they should have the supplements teachers, that they should be a system for supplements. Does anybody remember that statement?
We're discussing whether or not we said we would have supplements for the administrators.
No, I'm just asking, did I say the exact same supplement as teachers?
No, no.
I don't think I said that, so I think that's just a misword.
I don't think we said that.
I think you were just trying to equalize.
I believe my statement was something to the fact that administrators should have a matrix to set their salaries, their supplements, not their salaries, their supplements. But I just didn't say the same as teachers. I think it's just the way the wording is. Or you could strike the statement, whatever. I mean, I don't mind the statement. I did say we should have a system for administrative supplements. And the fourth dot, the statement is, the way it's written says, "Mr. Page expressed concerns about principals changing teacher grades." No time did I express any concerns about their ability to change it, their legal ability. I even said that that was, we needed that. My concerns were the fact that they did not have to report those changes, not that they were able to make them. I certainly support their right to make changes. Does that make sense, Kelly? Okay, just reword it a little bit. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes with the changes as stated.
And the consent agenda. Is that okay?
And the consent agenda, yes, sir.
Yeah, a motion and a second to accept the minutes with the changes discussed and the, accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our recognition portion of the meeting. We have the community schools award, Ms. Suzie Wyberg.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Kim Mitchell is here with me. She is the principal at MB Mills Elementary, and we would like to recognize tonight the fine efforts of the Statesville Police Department and specifically Chief Tom Anderson, who's here with his wife. And these are, these are Kim's words, so I want Chief Anderson to hear these, because his officers spend a great deal of time in our schools and create relationships with our kids, and they do an awful lot of great work in our schools. Although Chief Anderson and his department are super busy community workers, they find time to make visits to our schools. It's obvious that they are just as committed to our community as our schools are. They make a point to take time to walk through schools, speak with children, forming very important relationships with our students, and the students see them as protectors and helpers. They offer to help in any way they can, and that type of attitude starts with their leader, Chief Anderson. We appreciate that they know how valuable their relationships are with our kids and community. Think that kind of says it all. Would you like to embellish?
Just a couple of words. Yeah, a couple of years ago, Chief Anderson had called me when Sandy Hook had happened, and he said, "How can we, the police department, support the schools?" And so from there on, it was a partnership. And so he and his lovely wife are always present in evening events, anything that we've got going on our campus and involved with the good news club. And then the chief or his officers are on our campus, and they're making those valuable relationships with their kids, letting them know that they care and taking time to talk to them. So MB Mills is extremely, and I know they touch other schools as well, but I just wanted to take time because he personally, or he adopted our school, and so we see him quite a bit, and we're lucky to have him and his family, and even his daughter helps with our good news club, so thank you very much.
And Chief Anderson, if you and Mrs. Anderson would come up front. Ms. Haines, would you help us with the subscription?
It's on the floor, so I can see.
Thank you.
I hope you guys know what a great community leader is, because of how they're on, so thank you so much, Mrs. Anderson.
Next, we have our spelling bee and science fair recognitions. First, the spelling bee recognitions, Ms. Stevens.
And Mr. Kelly is going to help me present those. Thank you so much, families, for being here tonight. I know this is such a busy time of year. A few students were not able to come because of ballgames or other conflicts, but we have a great turnout tonight to recognize spelling bee, science fair, and governor's school. So first, we'll start with our district spelling bee winners. All of our middle and high, and elementary schools participate in the district spelling bee, so the competition is very stiff. And this year, we had two students who won the runner-up position and the overall winner position, both of whom had competed in the district B last year. And I apologize for my voice. The B went 36 rounds this year, with the last two students going 13 rounds head-to-head. And the winning words included words like troika, azimuth, egregious, and contrapuntal. Mr. Kelly, I told you I would not ask you to spell anything. Please don't ask me what any of those mean. Contrapuntal was the last word. So first, we would like to recognize from Cottle Creek Elementary School, fifth grader Emritha Ahmad. Emritha, if you'll wait here, we'll get a picture of you and the winner. Next, we would like to recognize Lucas Flowers from Mountmore School, seventh grader. And as I said, both Emritha and Lucas participated last year representing different schools, and they participated this year representing different schools. Here's the tricky part, next year, they'll both be students at Mountmore School, so only one of them can come to the district B next year. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Idaho State School's rocks the regional science fair. We're going to recognize the students who received recognition at the regional fair, first by elementary, then by middle, and then by high. So to present the elementary awards, Mr. Max James. There are many LEAs represented in the Northwest Regional Science Fair. At the elementary level, eight honorable mentions are given. Two of those honorable mentions belong to Idaho State School's students. There are eight exemplary awards given. Those exemplary winners go on to the state fair. Five of the eight were Idaho State School's students. So when I call your name, please come forward and wait for a photo. Winning honorable mention at the regional science fair, Brianna Gibson from Union Grove Elementary. Another honorable mention was Sammy Lucktong from Lake Shore Elementary. Sammy was not able to come tonight. Brianna, if you'll just wait there. James Brand from Coal Springs Elementary School was recognized for an exemplary project at the elementary level. Jackson Maltzberger and Brandon Moore worked together on a project which was given an exemplary award. Both of them attend Lake Norman Elementary School. Please come forward. Madeline Sigmund from Coal Springs, Landon Lotharp from Coal Springs, and Alan Spuak from Lake Norman Elementary School also won exemplary awards, but they were not able to be here tonight. Mr. James, if you'll pose for a photo with them, that would be great. And Mr. Martin Page will present our middle school winners. At the middle school level, the junior division, as it's known, first, second, and third place awards are given. And there are actually two competitions that occur at Appalachian State University at the regional fair in December. One is the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair, and the other is the North Carolina Student Academy of Science. Until last year, none of our students had participated in the Student Academy of Science competition. So I reached out to a few students, and I said, "Since you're going to be there anyway, presenting at the science fair, why not consider doing the Student Academy of Science also?" So last year, we had a few takers, and they did quite well. This year, we had more takers, and they also did well. Our first recognition will be Gabrielle Gazelle from Mountmore School. She placed second in biological B. Lucas Bonoma from Mountmore School, second place in chemistry. Kimber Miller, Mountmore School, second place in earth environmental science. Kimber had a partner, Olivia Garland, who could not be here tonight. Houston Finley from Northview School, first place in physics. Cassidy Brandt from Northview School, second place in technology engineering. Samantha Boone and Claire Evenson from Mountmore School, first place in technology and engineering. They also had a partner, Nathan Ostrowski, who could not be here tonight. And Austin Volsky from Troutman Middle School, third place biological A, could not be here tonight, nor could Riley Farrar from Northview School, biological A, or Siddharth Samal from Lake Shore Middle School, honorable mention in physics. So these are our middle school winners who were able to be here tonight. One more, Shruthi Manipalli. And Shruthi was presented an award in the Student Academy of Science, first place physics, junior division. Ms. Wyberg, get good photos. Thank you, Mrs. And presenting our awards and the senior, oh, thank you, Mr. Kelly, thank you so much. Presenting our senior division awards, Ms. Cindy Hates. Last year, Stephanie Powell was our only high school student to go to the regional fair, and Stephanie really enjoyed the experience. She went forward last year to both the state science fair and the Student Academy of Science state competition. So this year, she talked a colleague into doing a project with her. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Stephanie Powell and Catherine Stecker, both from VPAC, who placed third in biological science A at the regional fair. Catherine and Stephanie were also invited to attend the North Carolina Science Academy meeting in, was it Durham, Stephanie? Which is not just students, it is primarily scientists from across the country, the state. So that was a real opportunity for them to meet and network with scientists. So those were our elementary, middle, and high school winners at the regional science fair at Appalachian. Mr. Chuck Gallion will now present awards to those students who went on to the state competitions, either the North Carolina Academy, Student Academy of Science, and/or the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair, and were awarded there also. First, James Brandt of Coal Springs Elementary School, won an exemplary project at the state level. Cassidy Brandt from Northview School, won third place in the junior technology engineering division. Yes, there is a family connection there. Samantha Boone, Claire Evenson, and Nathan Ostrowski won second place in the junior technology, technology and engineering division. And Shruthi Manipalli won second place physics in the Student Academy of Science competition. Claire, if you and Samantha will stay here for just a second. Claire and Samantha also were awarded, and Nathan, their partner who's not here, were awarded special awards at the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair. They won the grand award of Broadcom Masters, which gives them the opportunity to apply to participate in national competition, which you're going to do, right, ladies? And they also were given the North Carolina Science, Math, and Technology Education Center's Promising Young Researcher Award. So we'd like to recognize them for those special awards. Have I missed any student here who came for a science fair award? Okay, great. All right, our next recognition, I'm very proud of this, are our students who have been invited to attend North Carolina Governor's School. As many of you know, North Carolina Governor's School is the oldest residential program of its kind in the country. Many other states have modeled their programs after ours. It used to be that the state funded North Carolina Governor's School, but several years ago, with budget cuts, funding was no longer provided. So alumni of North Carolina Governor's School raised the money themselves to keep it going. That's how life-changing North Carolina Governor's School is for students. And I'm always amazed when I'm out in schools, whether it's at Statesville High School or South Idaho High School, I always meet an adult who attended North Carolina Governor's School, and they cannot say enough about the experience. The only negative thing I've heard is it's hard to come back to high school after that summer at North Carolina Governor's School. So tonight, we would like to recognize those students who were invited. Now, this is very competitive, and every year, we have wonderful candidates, deserving candidates, who are not invited, and that's the only hard part about this whole process. This year, North Carolina Governor's School had 1,849 applicants from across the state. From that number, only 650 were invited to attend, 325 at East Campus, 325 at West Campus. In our district, the number that we can send forward is determined by the number of students in our 10th and 11th grade classes during the year of application. So we always have more applicants than we can send forward. Of the 30-some applicants that we did send forward, nine were invited to attend, and eight of those accepted the application. So when I call your name, please come forward and wait for a photo. Madison Seals in instrumental music from Lake Norman High School will be attending East Campus. If you'll just hold your applause till everyone's here. Connor Costello from Lake Norman High School will be attending for math at West Campus. Rachel Nash from Lake Norman High School is going in math at East Campus. Carolyn Drawhus from South Idaho High School is also going in math at West Campus. Alay Modi from South Idaho High School will be attending for natural science on East Campus. Alexandra Dawes, natural science. Alexandra is from South Idaho High School, and she will be on West Campus. Jay Sherrill, and board members, I know you remember Jay Sherrill. He is from South Idaho High School. He is going in social science, and he will be on West Campus. He is going in Social Science, and he will be on West Campus. And Pacha Ali from VPAC is going in Natural Science, and she will be on East Campus. Parents, if you took photos tonight, email them to me, just in case Ms. Wyberg lets me down. And finally, Dr. Cash is going to pose for a photo with one of our teachers, one of our educators at Idaho State's full schools. Because not only is it very competitive and prestigious to be selected to attend North Carolina Governor's School as a student, that is also true of the instructors at North Carolina Governor's School. And our own Matthew Reed of South Idaho High School, the Diploma Program Coordinator there, has been chosen to teach Philosophy and Epistemology at North Carolina Governor's School East. Very fitting, because Mr. Reed himself attended Governor's School on the East Campus in 1995. Tom Winton, who oversees the Governor's School program, said that Mr. Reed seemed to be a perfect fit for us, both for his Governor's School familiarity and for his vision of quality education for students. This is what we need, not just specialists in a particular discipline, but those who understand value of the process and joy of learning. Those who look beyond numbers and scores to get to students' deeper understanding and connections for future learning. Mr. Reed, are you here? Thank you.
We're not finished yet, we still have some more winners. We'll move on next to the Superintendent's Middle School and High School Art Show winners. Ms. Wyberg.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Last month was the elementary art school winners, and now the big kids are here. So I think what we'll do is we'll start with middle school, but I want to tell you that the middle school and high school art teachers and students were recognized during the Honors Chorus Event, which was held at Western Avenue Baptist Church on the 17th of April. Every middle and high school submits pieces to be judged for this event, and these works were judged by Mr. Rogelio Calvo, who is the Director of our Arts Council. Tonight, we're going to recognize the first, second, third, and Honorable Mention winners. And these people are fabulous artists, they have fabulous teachers, and their works will go into a one-year rotation among three of our educational buildings. So, I think we'll start with middle school, Mr. Johnson. And there in the upper corner, and I'm not sure which stack is high school, I think the top stack is middle, and it will start with Mary Ann Newman. Is Mary Ann here? From Lake Shore Middle? Teresa Dewoski from Brawley Middle? Mason Taylor, Brawley Middle? Jaden Anderson from West? Malik Troutman from Brawley Middle? Amber Wooten from West Middle? And Natasha Gao from North Middle? Oh, yes, those are very busy certificates, they have all kinds of stuff in them. The high school winners, in order of first place, second place, third. Megan Brackman from Lake Norman High School. Megan's here, they were worried. Elise Kaufman from Lake Norman High School. Sarah Hocker could not be with us tonight. We have a special mention, Taylor Moorfield, South Idaho High. Jacob Merrick, Honorable Mention from South High. Erin Boast from West High, also an honorable mention. And Mackenzie Patrick from Lake Norman High School, also an honorable mention. Taylor, I do believe you're even taller than me.
Next, we have the Battle of the Books winning teams from the elementary and middle schools. Dr. Blatner.
Dr. Cash, boards, I'd like to thank you for letting us award or recognize our Battle of the Books winners here today. Each year, we hold an elementary Battle of the Books and a middle school Battle of the Books. And each team is supplied with books that they have to read, and they have to ask, they're asked questions about it, and they confer, and they have to answer those questions. They get pretty detailed on some of these questions. In the elementary, they have 17 books, which they read. And in the middle, they have 27 books, which they read. And really have to read a lot of, my daughters have participated in this as well, and they spend a lot of time, both at school, at home, and everything, putting a lot of effort to compete in these events. And we're going to recognize two of our teams. The first team will be recognized in elementary. And Mr. Kelly, if you could help us present these. They are spread out, you can probably group them all together, so you don't have to walk back and forth. But we're proud to recognize Cottle Creek Elementary School as Battle Books Champion for elementary. They went to represent the county at the regional competition in April. The team is coached by Vivian Melvin and the Library Media Specialist, and Linda Lertz, Technology Chief Sister. If we could have them, Mr. Foster is also here, if he can come forward. And if you could come forward and help Mr. Kelly in giving the awards to the students. The students of the team are Alex Baker, Kaylee Calista, Ryan Mann, Jimmy Meister, Amrita Pramod, and Morgan Robbins. Thank you. The next school to award is actually split between two school board members. It's split between Ms. Bonham and Mr. Page. If I can ask Mr. Page, if you can please help and award these. We are proud to recognize Lake Shore Middle School as Battle Books Champion again this year. All nine middle school competitions, middle schools competed in this competition this year at the Unity Center at Statesville, March 10th. Lake Shore brought home, for the third year in a row, the first-place distinction from that event. They went on to counties and teach the regional competitions, and they had a strong second-place finish, the 18 counties that were represented there. The team is coached by Joan Milliken, the Library Media Specialist, and I'd like to congratulate them, and if Joan can help come forward to help distribute the certificates, I'll call out the students' names. Gabby Lassard, Gwen Hayden, Anish Nashin, Sumi Verma, Vivian Anderson, Samantha Beaver, Ethan Caton, and Rebecca Lassard.
Congratulations to all the recipients of these awards tonight. That concludes our recognition portion of the meeting, but I don't want to be remiss. I remember a few years ago, when we thought we had presented all the awards, we discovered a couple people had come in late and didn't get recognized. So I'll ask, before we move on to the non-consent agenda, if there are any students out here tonight expecting to be recognized that we didn't call the name. Anyone want to make sure? One of the worst things that can happen in my mind is that somebody comes and sits through the rest of the meeting, and we find out at the very end that they didn't get called. So we don't want you to make the trip for nothing. Looks like we got everybody. Well, thank you all for coming tonight, and keep up the good work. As they're making their way out, we'll go ahead and get ready for the non-consent agenda. Ask Dr. Miller to come forward. We have Item A, the Energy United Controls Contract.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I always like to see a lot of awards.
It's a great night this time of year, when we see all the results and culmination of a lot of the work that's been done during the year.
Absolutely. I'd like to publicly thank Susie Wyberg, because she does a fantastic job. She's amazing.
I say, which one is Susie?
Thank you. Members of the board, as part of our plan for controls of our HVAC systems, we've implemented a plan, probably about a five- or six-phase plan over the years, and we partner with Energy United. And Energy United, for energy conservation, has a program where they will work with us with controls, and DDC controls are what we're trying to upgrade to. What you see before you is a contract. Basically, Energy United provides the money for the controls, and then we pay them back over a period of time. I think it's a four-year contract. We built this into our budget over the last several years, so it's something that's continuing. I would recommend that we accept this contract. Mr. Pence has reviewed it, it's been vetted. It's pretty much the standard contract we've been doing for the past several cycles. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Miller about the Energy United contract? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I make the motion, we accept the lease agreement with Energy United.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Let me ask, these are the ones that allow us to control these things from the central?
Yes.
Yes.
And we do control ours.
Any other discussion points? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
And just for information, this goes to the county commissioners in June. For their approval, they have to approve as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Next, we have the Item B, the approval of contracts for licensed personnel and administrators. Buffle LaSagne.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, you have had the opportunity to review the list of recommended renewals for certified staff. I would like to start with that one, which are all of your teachers, that's the largest packet. And this is a voting item.
Would you like for us to vote these individually? I mean, individual groups of contracts?
Yes, they would need to be voted on individually.
First, do we have any questions or comments regarding this first group of contracts?
This is just approval of contracts for the licensed personnel?
Yes, this would be one-year contracts pursuant to the changes with the General Assembly. These are one-year teacher contracts.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the one-year teacher contracts for licensed personnel.
Do you have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If you're not all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
The next item has to do with the teacher contract non-renewals. And so you have the list of those candidates that were recommended to Mr. Johnson by principals for non-renewal. We went in, we met with each of those teachers, and tried to meet with all of the individuals that desired to meet with us. And so we're bringing forth this list, and this is also a voting item.
Comments or questions about the teacher contract non-renewals? I'll entertain a motion that we approve this list for non-renewal.
I'll make a motion that we take the recommended teacher contract non-renewals recommendation.
Have a motion and a second, Ms. Haynes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
The last item I have for you is in three different sections. Those are the administrative contracts. What you will find is the detail, the official contracts behind the summary list that I've tried to put in the front of the packet for you. And so with those documents, I will let you know, as you can see from all of the copies that you have, which are front and back on paper, and individual sheets in my office, if anybody is missed, we need to get these approved here, and we will bring them back in July. I mean, in June, if we go back and find that anybody's missed. The first set that you received were the administrative contracts. You will see that with the alignment dates of all of those contracts, they're basically aligned to Mr. Johnson's contract pursuant to general statutes. You also have the principals, which all of those renewals are for four-year, for four years. You have all of the information with that. What you received today was regarding the assistant principals, and I know there's a lot on that summary table, but what I need for you to understand with that summary table is you're going to see some columns that are in reference to what their actual assistant principal pay would be, and then there are some columns that are related to what their teacher salary will be. If you will remember, by far, the majority of our APs would make more money as a classroom teacher than they do as an assistant principal. The one thing that we're hoping that the General Assembly will address is there's a clause, and you remember, we've talked about this before, that basically states that if you were hired, originally it was associated with National Board certification, so that's why it's a little disconnect. If you were hired as an assistant principal, July 1st, 2009, or after, there's a clause that says you could be paid on whichever's the higher on that teacher scale. You will see on those recommendations, there's one renewal, and then at the bottom, you will see some addendums. Mr. Johnson asked for me to provide you with those addendums, because those addendums include those individuals who are not yet up for renewal, that you can see are some of our longest-serving assistant principals, who are actually making less than newer assistant principals because of the gap in that clause. And so the recommendation from administration is that you consider those addendums and see if that is something we could do locally, just so that we could have all of those APs on par with one another. And I would add that if you have any specific questions about any of the contracts or anything like that, I'm glad to answer them. If it's a general question in open session, if it's regarding any specific individual, then we can table that for a closed session discussion. Are there any questions regarding contracts?
I move, can I? I move that we table this whole discussion till next month. We have a policy in place that states we should receive these materials in accordance to Policy Code 2335, materials which would help assist the board members to become informed of the issues proposed for board considerations. I got the first two packets Friday at 6:30 PM, and then we just received the third set. So I move that we table, what section is this? Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
My sister, Admin Principal, all three or?
Yeah, Non-Consent Agenda, the approval of contracts for licensed personnel, including principals, APs, and administrators.
Could we possibly discuss it in closed session and then bring it back for vote tonight, or does it have to go into June?
Are you asking me, Ms. Bonham?
Actually, it was a question for Dr. Cash.
We have a motion on the table. We do not have it seconded yet, so we could have a second, potentially to have discussion at that point.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the motion to table until June, so now we can have discussion.
Would you consider discussing this in closed session and then bringing it back after closed session tonight, or you're dead set that it needs to be taken care of in June?
I would be opposed to that, because I've not even reviewed it. I have not. This has been a busy weekend, and as I said, I received it Friday night, was out of town all day Saturday, just received the third packet just a few moments ago. So I would like to review, and in accordance to the policy, it's a breach of policy to receive this material as late as we did.
Dr. Cash, may I have a moment to address the timeline, please? And Mr. Johnson, if you would like to speak to this, you are welcome too. We have been talking, the initial information regarding contracts was submitted back in February. Since then, we have had principals who have resigned and different things, which is typical this time of year, as we have resignations and other things come up. Part of the reason that we're asking for this timeline, understanding that you got that Friday, is we have been talking for weeks now, because it's really good to have as many of these movements completed as possible when you construct contracts, and I have carried them to the latest possible deadline that I possibly can, in order for us to provide that security, so that we won't have people going other places because they don't have a contract. And so I understand the lateness of receiving it, and it was in no intent at all to not be in line with policy, as we've been talking about this for a period of time. But I would like for us to think about all of the leadership that is included in these contract renewals, and to postpone till June could have some potential impact.
Any other discussion?
Well, I hate to postpone this. We've done this one time before. It puts these people in limbo. It gives them a question as to what is happening, and if anybody's hanging over their shoulder anywhere, especially if they've got extra money that we don't have, we could lose some of these people. I don't want to postpone this until June.
Can I make a motion to amend the motion?
Yes, ma'am. No, she can make amendment.
Well, no, I mean to amend the motion, and then you have to vote on the amendment. I was just going to say, to amend the motion to, we could table it till June, or after discussion tonight, if Ms. Haynes feels like she, like we've discussed it far enough where she feels like she's comfortable with it, then we can vote tonight. So a vote either in June or tonight after our closed session.
Most contracts start July 1st, right?
They do.
Pardon me?
They do.
July 1st, a new budget year. Would it be possible if we did, like administrator, there's three different administrators, principals, and the APs. Do you want to postpone them all, or can we not?
I would be agreeable, if I understand Ms. Bonham's amendment. You're asking to amend my motion to read either after we have closed session, so we can ask the closed session questions, or, and/or, or June?
Yeah.
Depending on how that discussion goes.
Correct.
I would be agreeable with that.
Someone help me with Parliament proceeding.
Need a second on the amendment, there's not been a second.
We have a second on the amendment.
Second, and I'll second Ms. Bonham's amendment.
We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Is all in favor of that motion?
Well, you have to vote on the amendment first.
We vote on amendment first.
You vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the motion as amended.
Go back.
Okay. Well, that's what I meant. Yeah, but make it completely clear, we vote now on the motion to amend. That has been seconded, so all in favor of the motion to amend the original motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have the motion approved. I get confused on these things.
We have the amendment.
Now you've got to vote on the whole motion.
Now you've got to vote.
The motion as amended.
Okay, so.
I, one comment about the motion as amended. I'm assuming in closed session, we will come back out and have to make the decision on which way we're going to go, which will take another motion. Is that correct?
Yes, you're going to need further action, based on the way that amendment is worded, you're going to need further action to decide whether you're voting tonight or voting in June. And then I would just caution you, I don't know what the topic of closed session is, if you're talking about specifics, specific contracts that are here, is what you're wanting to address in closed session. Not a general discussion about contracts.
In other words, from what I understand, we will have to talk about specifics, then we'll have to come back out and make another decision. Because the motion really is not making, it's an either-or, and motion, which is, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure everybody understood, we were going to have to come back out and make another motion to decide this motion.
Dr. Cash, I would add another just consideration point for the board, and also for the good of the public. The reason you received the contracts the way you did the Friday, Monday, and the APs today, with the exceptions of those that are highlighted in yellow in the discussion we had about the way the General Assembly had to address pay, and I think that the General Assembly has had lots of discussion about that, and so hopefully we'll have a resolution that way. Everything else is straight, state salary, the assigned supplement, and the assigned travel. There's no negotiation in those AP contracts, and so that's part of the reason they're straight by the formula, that I think Mr. Johnson may have given you a copy of that also, that we've utilized for APs for a period of time. So there's not the differential discussion that goes along with other administrative contracts.
Any other discussion? We need to vote then on the amended motion made earlier. So all those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Well, actually, there are two answers to that, but I'll just stick with the simple no.
The motion carries, then six to one. The next item then is the, I believe, Dr. Lassane, that finished yours, right?
Yes.
Okay, go to the Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees appointment, Mr. Johnson.
Right, Dr. Cash, members of the board, we'd like to submit the name of Dr. R. Steve Hill for a second term on the Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees.
I make a motion, we accept the nomination.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If you're not all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That concludes our non-consent agenda items for tonight. We move now to the public comment portion of the meeting. We had one person sign to speak to the board tonight, Ms. Wanda Wood. That's correct, come forward. Ms. Wood, our general policy is to ask you to come to the podium and state your name and the purpose of your comments, and then we'll ask you to keep comments to three minutes or less.
Well, my name is Wanda Wood. I have a little different look out, I mean, I'm nervous, but I have a little bit different overview of the school system at this particular time and place. I'm 67 years old, I have three children, five grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren, and I have been involved with all of them in the school system, and had no idea of the changes until I started volunteering and helping with my great-grandchild, who's in the second grade at this particular time. And to me, it was such a shock. I couldn't get over the difference, and I'm going, I'll miss some of my points, so I'm going to read some of them that I put down. I have written letters, because I've been so upset, I've written letters to two of the representatives and two of our senators. I've called Mr. Johnson, I've talked to his assistant about things that's been going on in this second-grade class. But I'll read my statement. I'm, well, I told you that. And I've gone to eat with each one of my other ones, and helped with the school system when they were in there, and I had no idea how things had changed, and I try to give respect to people, and I expect to get respect back, especially from children. And that's not the way it is in the school system, especially the public school system today. It's horrible. And I think once everybody took out, the children in the school system today are definitely not respectful. Since God, morals, and values, and discipline have been taken out of the system, there's a lot of chaos. I've been volunteering for approximately six months, and every Thursday, I go home feeling very sad and frustrated. There's no learning that can occur in this particular classroom that my grandson, my great-grandson was in, because there were children, this one specific little boy started it all. His name was Luke, I don't know his last name, but his name was Luke. And it was, the boys found out that he could get by with it and not have any repercussions, and so they decided they were going to get by with it too. This little boy constantly ran around the room, he constantly bothered the other children. There was no way the children could learn in this classroom, and the teacher tried so hard to do what he could do, you know, with the school system, the way it is today. You're not supposed to punish, and, you know, you either send them to the office or something, which they sit them down and let them sit two or three hours, or you tell them, let's make better choices. You know, okay, these children who are so, you know, out of whack anyway, are not going to think about making better choices. We've got to go back to some kind of discipline. And these kids come from the homes where there's no discipline, and they come to school where there's no discipline, and they're completely out of control. And in my eyes, if you wonder why children in high schools are shooting other children, all you've got to do is go to the elementary grades and look. I mean, bullying is just as bad as it's ever been, and they talk back to the teacher, they throw things across the room when they're trying to teach, and it's a horrible, it was a horrible experience for me. And let's see, let me see where I'm at now. Another concern, of course, of mine, is the unattainability of the new Common Core. I didn't know anything about this Common Core way of learning until I started this year with my great-grandson. And whoever came up with this is a lot smarter than most of us parents, or they don't know anything about kids. Before they can read, they're given computers that they only play on in this second-grade class, they did no work on this computer, all they did was play games, and before they can add or subtract, they're introduced to geometry. I thought in second grade, they're learning geometry. I didn't have geometry till I was in high school, and I didn't do very well at it then. So in second grade, they're trying to introduce them to geometry, and the kids do not understand, you know, what's going on. And before they understand the English language and know how to spell and write a sentence, they're introduced to a foreign language. My opinion is that we should get back to the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic. You know, make sure that child in kindergarten, first, and second grade knows how to add, subtract, spell, read, before you start on any of these other distractions. You know, they need to have those basics in mind. And I think it's such a shame for a young man or a young lady to graduate high school and not be able to read, or write, or spell. I mean, and now I go by so many signs, even at churches, on billboards and everything, where words are misspelled. I'm a particular fan of words, and I don't like misspelled words. So many people depend on computers and never learn to spell. So many depend on calculators and never learn to count. If they didn't have the things in McDonald's and Burger King, they couldn't give you back the change, they don't know how to count change. Let's wake up and change things for the better. Also, bullying is worse today than it's ever been, because children are not taught to respect themselves or others. It's important to let children know that they are not in control of everything, they're not able to handle that responsibility. And another thing... And another thing, I am not being, I am not trying to be ugly, but according to the things I've just read in the paper the past day or two, you guys, the city, everybody, everybody's telling us we've got to live within our budget. The recession is not over in this part of the country anymore. We live off of Social Security. So I think you guys need to live within your budget, you know, work within your budget. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak to the board tonight? Mr. Johnson?
I'd actually like to address Ms. Wood. Thank you for coming and speaking, and the reason being is because I want you to bring 10 of your friends next month.
Okay.
And be sure to come to committee of the whole meeting, because that's where all the childish antics take place in this operation.
Okay.
If you want to learn anything about it.
Okay.
And then get them to bring 10 the next month.
Okay.
You know, and maybe there'll be some accountability. The school administration in this county proved last October that they don't abide by the rules, because these folks that were elected as board members gave them a budget in August, and they still hired 28 more people than they were supposed to and had to ask for $1.4 million out of the bank account. So last Monday night, and Monday night a month ago, when they spent seven hours and 45 minutes talking about it, it was all about how they're going to lay off teachers. Well, there's no guarantee that these folks that you elected that vote for this budget are going to get what they want, because they're liable to come back in October of 2015 and tell them they need another $1.4 million.
Yeah, that's it.
So bring 10 people with you. That's what I recommend you do.
I will do that.
I appreciate y'all's service. I know it's not an easy position.
Thank you. And one thing I'd like to respond to, I know that I've come here.
Ms. Wood, out of respect for other people that come and speak, we try to limit to the three minutes.
I'd like to ask you for a sec. I love Mr. Johnson. He's, I've known him ever since my kids were little, but he makes way too much money.
Thank you. I would ask you, would anyone else like to speak to the board tonight? Are there any board member comments tonight? We're ready for superintendent comments and Mr. Johnson.
Thanks, Dr. Cash. Members of the board, I just wanted to give a little report on our meeting last week with the county commissioners. It was a very productive meeting, and I think it was a meeting where our budget request was heard and was digested completely by the county commissioners. This was also a very positive atmosphere in the room this year. Our presentation was scheduled for 45 minutes, and it lasted about an hour and a half. And so I really do think that they listened carefully, and they empathize with the situation that is facing the school system, and I might add too, that it's a lot of school systems across North Carolina. Today, I did ask Melissa to prepare a response. It does look like that the county funding level increase is going to be 4.7. Now, that's a little bit different. The response this year was a little different than in years past, because normally what the county commissioners will do is they will hear our presentation, and then they'll hold a public hearing on the budget in June, and then respond to us. But we've gotten our response, and the response is that 4.7% increase on the current spend side is what we can expect for next school year. So if you run down that column, you can kind of see what a 4.7% increase will look like if we plug in the numbers that we had presented to you earlier. At the bottom of the page, the second half of the page, you can see some of the potential responses, and so we have left those in play for you. And the position count, the Human Resources Department has met with principals and identified 24 positions that could be reduced at a savings of 1.1 million. The total savings is 1.9 there at the bottom of the page if we do all of those staff reductions, and that would put us using $671,000 in fund balance for next year. On the back of that sheet is Dr. Miller's, a summary of Dr. Miller's capital budget, and one of the things that we will recommend to you, and this is a very positive piece of news that we got from the county commissioners, our capital budget is going to increase by $1.5 million. That's a half million dollars more than we anticipated on the capital side. So we would like to use a half million of that to apply towards the technology lease. And if you approve that, then that's how we're able to reduce some of the reductions on page one. But we'll be glad to continue this discussion with you. I am mindful that now that we have a hard figure from the county commissioners, I really don't think that number's going to change. So the sooner that we can begin addressing our challenges, I think the better for the district. But we'll be glad to answer any questions that you guys have about the presentation or the numbers that we put in front of you tonight.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Johnson. That concludes our open meeting agenda for tonight. Before we entertain a motion to go into closed session, I'll mention a few other upcoming dates.
Does one correction on the graduation for VPAC?
Yes. Sorry, the May 12th would be the graduation date for VPAC.
12:30.
Oh, 12:30, still on the 15th, but at 12:30 PM. Okay, I'm sorry. So May 15th for VPAC graduation at 12:30 PM. May 15th, CCTL graduation at 2:00 PM. May 25th will be the Memorial Day holiday. And then our next committee of the whole meeting will be on June 1st at the EDR Education Center at 5:00 PM. Then the next regular board meeting will be here on June 8th at the Aral County Government Center at 6:00 PM.
Was that VPAC graduation moved to 12:30 so we wouldn't have to use motorcycles to go from the one to the other?
That may be part of the reason.
With this one, to entertain a motion that we need to go into closed session to discuss personnel, are there any property issues tonight?
Yes.
Okay, personnel and property issues.
According to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, I make a motion if the board entered a closed session to discuss terms, I guess, terms of contracts and, I guess this one's, in property acquisition.
Do we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I think Ms. Haynes speak. All in favor of the motion to go into closed session for those issues, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you have a motion carries. Again, thank you all for your attendance tonight. Again, thank you all for your attendance tonight.